Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 Regular School Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 9th, 2014. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Palmer.
Here.
Bardell.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Landwehr.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here too.
Okay, I'm glad. All right. Mission statement, as is our custom, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values in this district: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next on our agenda is Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
All moved.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Excuse me, announcements. September 16th, Tuesday, 5:00 p.m., School Board Listening Session here in the Family Center foyer. September 16th, Tuesday, 6:00 p.m., School Board Work Session here in the Community Room. September 23rd, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m., Regular School Board Meeting in the Community Room. September 30th, Tuesday, 6:00 p.m., Joint School Board-City Council Meeting here in the Community Room. October 14th, October, already, folks. October 14th, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m., Regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair members, there's none at this time.
Very good, thank you. Next on our agenda is Communication to the Board, and at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks as clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. However, the Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone who would like to come speak to the Board? Lots of folks, but they're presenting, so I think we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, which consists of the minutes of the August, excuse me, 13th and 26th School Board Meetings and Personnel Report. Do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
All moved.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And a motion is carried. Thank you. Next is Discussion Reports, Information Items, Reports from Members of the Board, where the Board members can report on Board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board Education. Laurie.
It'll be pretty short and simple. I had a very nice meeting with the Superintendent, so thank you, Kathy, for your time, and that is all I have to report this time.
Very good, thank you. Ted.
I was just at the Policy Subcommittee Meeting before this meeting, and then attended at least part of the convocation. It was very, very exciting, very enthusiastic, as usual, so great start to a school year. And congratulations to Matt Townsend again for his award, very well deserved. And I attended a WMEP Executive Committee Meeting. WMEP is still working on its strategy and strategic plan, and I understand there was a Superintendent's Meeting for all the member districts, and got some, I believe they got some good feedback, Lieutenant Lester did, on how WMEP can better serve the member districts and what value WMEP can bring to the member districts. So that's the focus that the Board is focusing on, and we're going to flesh that out more as time goes on. And then they're in the process of hiring a new Superintendent, working on a permanent Superintendent, getting that done. And then I happy to report, we have 24 Columbia Heights students enrolled at the Fair School in Crystal, which is one more in our allocation, so we've got a full complaint, full set of students going to Crystal. Then I've been to the Columbia Heights Business Council last week, put on by the chamber, and then also talked to constituents.
Great, thank you. John.
I also was at the convocation for a short period of time, long enough to be introduced, and then snuck back over to Kodiak where I had the opportunity to help cook. I hope everybody felt okay after they ate that day. Highland had an open house or open house picnic. I was able to attend that. Columbia Academy had the same thing here just recently. I was at the high school open house, Columbia Academy open house, was able to go watch the high school football team play against St. Agnes. They had a great night. Brooklyn Center this last week at home again, the Heights football team did great. Yesterday, the JV team played Brooklyn Center, and they had a really good game as well. I was part of the review for the Superintendent's Evaluation, attended the chair meeting, and I think that's enough.
All right, thanks. Laura.
Well, as I'm hearing everybody talk about what they were doing, I was like, oh yeah, I did that, oh yeah, I did that. Yeah, so I did attend, I attended, I guess basically was like the opening day over at the academy, because I wasn't able to attend the open house, but did get to get over there, and everybody looked really, really excited to get the year started, so that was really fun to see. And I also attended the open house over at Highland. I also went to the Business Council Meeting, and we had a presentation by one of the officers. I really apologize, I cannot recall his name, and he was really talking about how our demographics have really changed, and how we're getting a lot more young families that want to make Columbia Heights their home, so that was some really incredibly good news, you know, and how much they really want to become part of the community and stuff, so I'm looking forward to that. I also attended a 916 Board Meeting, and we had a presentation from the, from Century College, where they were talking about a lot of the credits and scholarships that are earned through the 916, the 916 district, and the students going on to career, career paths. So that was very, very interesting, and that's a wonderful thing, another benefit that we also get with being members of 916. I attended also the Subcommittee on Policy.
All right, thank you. Missy.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay, thanks. I was also at the Subcommittee for Policy Meeting, and I spent the day at the convocation, rode the bus around, and did my best to point out the portions of Columbia Heights and the district of note, and I ad-libbed the whole thing, so they're new, I mean, you know, so I did my best, and, but lots of energy, and I think it seemed like a good group to me. The bus was completely full. I know that Mr. Burkus and I had scrunch on a portion of a portion of a seat to be aboard, but, you know, that's a good sign, you know, everyone was there. And obviously went to lunch, and I will say, after lunch, I didn't feel so well, because I ate too much, but other than that. What else did I do? I can't remember. I did go to the Association of Metropolitan School District Meeting last Friday, however, and there was an Executive Director's Report, and he basically just updated the Board of Directors on, you know, some of the subcommittees still going on or starting back up, teacher development evaluation, Q Comp, multi-tiered systems for support and integration rule, redrafting. But an interesting thing was from, let's get my notes here, Bill Morris, he's a political pollster, he does surveys, and he polled 1,200 Minnesotans statewide, and I won't go through the whole thing, just a couple of things that I found interesting. Plus or minus 3.2 percent, direction in Minnesota, 53 percent said right direction, wrong track was 34 percent. Over the years, he said right direction was coming down, and then wrong track was going up. Household finances this year, 63 percent said about the same, and 17 percent worse off. Nothing real surprising there. Let's see, quality of public schools in Minnesota, overall favorable, 66 percent versus what was interesting, 45 percent thought the schools were good in 1974. So that was an interesting statistic. I was a little bit surprised on that. Here's an, should, the question was, should we increase the dropout age to 17? 55 percent of those polled said no, and then looking into it, they said the reason is, well, why would you want to keep a kid who doesn't want to be in school in school? So that's, again, what the, what the survey results said. Overwhelming support for high school graduation tests, support 75 percent, but he also commented that if you use, and that's using competency testing, if you use the words "high stakes" testing, it drops significantly, so there goes to show you, it also depends on how the question is asked, so. Can you remember anything else? Was it notes? I think I'll stop right there, but it's always interesting, he does it every year for AMSD, and I think that's it. Superintendent Kelly.
Mr. Chair members, I did attend the AMSD. We could put that PowerPoint in the Superintendent's Update if you'd like. I wrote on mine, if you don't mind my notes, I'll be happy to put that in there, because everybody finds something else interesting about that, but it was a, it was a very interesting presentation. I too enjoyed the welcome back convocation and the picnic, and I want to thank everyone who made the return of staff so successful this fall, and in addition, I want to thank the Board for providing the cake. I particularly enjoyed the chocolate. Welcome to all the pre-K through 12 scholars, little scholars and students who started the year this past, last week. It really was great to see them all coming back into the buildings and to hear their voices in the classrooms again. I want to say a special thank you, though, to the Placement Center, Director Hollaby and the staff over there, because there was a large volume in the last two to three weeks of new students enrolling, and so they were, they have been busy round the clock, and Ms. Bonnie Hughes came in, she's a retired clerical, and she really helped out for two and a half weeks, and I just said goodbye to her today, and she gave us some suggestions for even more improvement in there, but they really have done a lion's share of work processing all those students, and then I want to thank the Principals for accepting them all and getting them on a learning path, so all's well with Placement. In addition, and Principal Fort will talk more about this, I had a wonderful time at the Minnesota Business Partnership, celebrating Valley View Elementary, and I'm sure that Principal Fort will elaborate more on this award when he talks tonight, but what an honor. Congratulations to the Valley View students, and to the staff, and to the parents, and the community, and especially to Principal Fort for their collaborative work on really tackling the area of student achievement. The Assembly was amazing, it was a sea of blue and gold, and it was very interesting, because after you have been in an assembly with little people for about 45 minutes, it was very warm and humid that day, and you found even the Business Partnership first loosening the tie and then taking off the jackets, so you might want to suggest air conditioning, Principal Fort. Is there anything they can do? It was great. I, as Member Landwehr already referenced, WMEP, from the standpoint of the Superintendent's, we have been meeting, at the request, really, of the Joint Powers Board to give them some feedback, and so Superintendent Lester met with us at our quarterly meeting, and we had really three major topics. One was, there is a movement at WMEP to be value-added to the collaborative partner districts, whereas they have been value-added for the two schools, they're trying to say what programs could they share with member districts and services. And so some of that team came in and made a presentation that was very interesting, and as a matter of fact, we're going to have members of that team come out at our first after-school leadership workshops for the admin team to talk about value-add and what we can get for products and services through WMEP. So that was very useful. The second part of the agenda was much more serious, in that the Joint Powers Board wanted some feedback on the viability of the organization, the collaborative arrangement as it stands, and also on governance. And it's not always that superintendents get to weigh on governance, but it was more from the vantage point of what role should the superintendents play, what voice should or should not be heard. And so we discussed a little, but we are actually meeting this week in a facilitated focus group on those very questions, and we were preparing, after that, to make some possible recommendations to the WMEP Joint Powers Board for some consideration. And it's an important time, because you can feel, I think Minneapolis is the most obvious one, that they haven't until October to really let WMEP know again if they really feel that that's a viable collaborative for them to be a part of, which then throws in play everybody else in the organization, but it is one of the first times around the table that I've seen that superintendents in a lot of districts are saying, does this collaborative make sense for us to belong to, and should we be discussing this with our Board? So I think that in September, at the work study, I might give you some more information on that, if, depending upon our work this next week. The Achieve Program is one of the programs this fall that is under formal review, and so we had a meeting today on data and mission alignment and effectiveness and financial constraints of that program, and we will be reviewing that in September and October, and I think that there will be some recommendations on the future of that program. Participated in the Superintendent's Evaluation Process with Chair Bardell and Vice Chair Larkin, and I want to thank all the Board members for their feedback and insights into that process. The admin team continues to work on developing and providing information that is value-neutral, but we hope has value, on the levy questions approved by the School Board, and I think that one of the things that has been accomplished, and it really is, thank you to a lot of people on the management team, but particularly Director Mann, is the website is up and operational, and I think Director Henneken's had a lot to do with that, as well as Director Holmgren. We, I had, I did have an enjoyable time with Member Meyer, and would like to thank her for that conversation, and I had, I had multiple phone calls and meetings with other members on the Board, so thank you for spending time or chatting with me.
All right, very good, thank you. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is the opening of school building updates, and that'll be the K-12 principals, so welcome.
Update on our buildings and opening of school for Columbia Academy. One of our focuses has been really concentrating on the first six weeks of school. We assessed our needs in the building, we wanted to make sure we got off to a good start, so we've been really talking about rules, regulations, expectations, being consistent with staff members and how you implement those things, rules and expectations. So we have a plan, a really detailed plan, that teaching and learning help the administrators and some of the staff members formulate a plan, day-to-day plan. We're in the second week of that plan, and part of what that involves is the technology component and the personalized learning initiative, so that students do not have their devices at this time. Next Monday, the seventh graders will receive their devices, and then after that, the sixth graders. So we had a series of meetings with the sixth grade, every sixth grade student and their parents, about signing off on it, a release form, and all the details about usage and what have you. So that, that happened prior to school, it was a very busy time prior to even when the students returned. We had a picnic last Friday, Director Larkin was there, modest turnout, but it was our first time, I guess I say we were getting our feet wet at the academy for having a picnic, so good idea. Our thoughts were at, I think, most of the schools and Columbia Academy included, is we wanted to meet parents in an informal environment and start to build some relationship with those families, and we had an opportunity to do that on a small scale. We have, we had grade-level meetings first few days of school, we started eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade, had all the kids in the gymnasium, all the administrators spoke, basically reviewing all the expectations and rules, and just in an attempt to make sure we really got off to a good start, so that was done. The solar panels were installed over the summer, you're probably aware of that, and open house was well-attended, well-attended, and I think partially because enrollment at the academy as of today was 676 students, end of the year, last year was 693 students. So it's really a good start for the enrollment for Columbia Academy. Can I do Valley View now? Okay. Valley View. We're in the second year of uniforms at Valley View, very, very smooth with that transition. We are focusing on building strong grade-level teams, because we do have some new staff members at each grade level, so one of our focuses is to acclimate those teachers to the grade levels. Construction is an issue, it's my understanding that is on schedule at this point, and I'm sure Principal DeWitt can attest to this, not terribly distracting from the instructional day, but it's, it's something that, it's good, and it'll be, and we'll be all glad when it's over, and we have a nice new classrooms. And I guess, oh, Valley View numbers started 4:51 on the first day, and we're up to 5:06 now, and the last piece was on Thursday, September 4th, Minnesota Business Partnership came to Valley View, we were awarded the award 2014, they do one school only now, a few years ago, they did a couple schools, they did like a rural school, and then they did an urban school, and then I think last year, they changed to one school only. Minnesota Business Partnership is comprised of 150 businesses in the state of Minnesota, they employ 400,000 people, and they have a vested interest in having quality, competent, potential employees, and so that's the reason for the interest in the education of our students, so that's why they support us there. On October 7th, Superintendent Kelly and I and some of the Valley View staff will be attending the annual dinner. It's again October 7th, and then that night, we will receive a $20,000 check as recognition for our award. So we are appreciative of that award, and look forward to doing some, some creative things with the $20,000 that we will be receiving.
I think that warrants a round of applause.
Absolutely.
[applause]
Good evening, Director Bardell, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Highland is also off to an excellent start. We had a very well-attended open house. We also had our picnic on the same night as open house this year, rather than an end of the school year picnic, and we served over 500 people, so very well-attended picnic. So we thank the Highland PTO for sponsoring our beginning-of-the-school-year picnic this year. We're also off to a strong start for enrollment. As of today, we had 527 students attending school. We also have quite a few new teachers at Highland, so again, I'll second the comment that we're working on developing relationships with our new staff. We're also serving nine student teachers this school year. Some of the student teachers started last year in December and are carrying over through the end of December this year, and some are new with the start of the school year. It sounds like a lot of, just what Willie says, but we also have been really focusing on the beginning of the school year, obviously with the new bullying statute, that has been a primary focus of our professional, or of my professional development with the teachers, but also the start of the school year to ensure that we communicate the statute to the students and parents, and that we make that a priority in our lessons. We have also focused on rituals and routines in the school. Parents will have their first newsletter from me this Thursday, will go home, and it'll talk about our hallway expectations, which we've had in a loose format up until this point now, will be more of a firm format of what it's expected to look like when you're walking in the hallway, hence making school conducive to learning. We want the hallways quiet and kids to show their responsibility when they're in the hallway. And last, I just wanted to comment, we are going to continue our partnership with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, so we will continue our strong mentorship program this year. I have many Highland teachers also signed up to mentor students, so we're excited about getting those partnerships going, or continuing some of the partnerships from last year.
Thank you.
Chair Bardell, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. You know, every year, it's just, I need to say so many of the same things. Every year, it seems like it's just a smoother year than the last, and it's really, it's starting to feel like we know what we're doing, you know, when we start the school year. But we, so at North Park, we changed our open house a bit this year as well. We really wanted to focus more on a community visit field, you know, especially as we move more into learning studios, it's not going to be about parents and students coming to North Park for open house to see who their teacher is, they're already going to know who their teachers are. And so instead, this year, we held most of it outside. We invited families to come into the building to drop off supplies and just take a peek at the room, but we set up tables and had an ice cream social outside, so that we could see our community visiting with one another, and it was really highly successful, and a lot of ice cream, I think some people came up for seconds, but that was okay. It was an awful lot of people, and it was a lot of fun, much like, much like Principal Fort, Principal Fort over there, I had two buildings, is he still Principal? Much like Principal Fort, we like air conditioning. At open house, anyway.
Clarify, that was with the Business Partnership.
So, so in addition, at North Park, much like Principal DeWitt mentioned, we've really focused on explaining the bullying policy, not just to staff, but also to students. So I'm spending this week going to morning meetings at each grade level to explain the changes to kids, so that they understand, you know, bystanders have a very important responsibility, they always have, but now they're going to be held accountable for that, and that's a pretty big deal, it's a big change, and so we're explaining that to the kids ourselves, and we are entering the third year of the learning studio era, and so our fourth graders entered a new learning studio this year, and it's just about finished structurally, and we're kind of getting used to going in and being flexible and understanding that everything isn't going to be up and running right away. They're going to have a focus on video production this year, in addition to, you know, reading, and math, and science, and other 21st century skill development, but that's going incredibly well, and there's a lot less stress this year, because, you know, we realize that we can do it. Two years ago, it was very stressful, last year was pretty stressful, this year, I feel like we have a group of fourth-grade teachers that are very, very well-prepared. And our enrollment today has grown to 473. We're down from this point last year, but we are actually two students above where we were in 2012 on this particular day, and that's my presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Bardell, members of the School Board, Superintendent Kelly. High school's off to a great start. Our staff is very excited about the district implementing the college and career readiness pathway, that's one of the focuses that we'll have this year. We're excited to see that we're vertically aligning E-12 and having benchmarks for our kids to attain to be prepared for college and careers. We want to thank you, our staff wants to thank you for your continued support for our avid program. We have seven sections offered to our students this year. We continue to see our students challenge themselves with our AP courses, and our steady and strong students taking those electives as AP is great to see at the high school. We also have another program that we've talked about is the internship, corporate internship We also have another program that we've talked about is the internship, corporate internship in the IT area with the 44 different corporate partnerships in our community, helping our students become college and career-ready with the Genesis Works program. All three of those programs are very strong with students. And students over the last two or three years have seen the success of other students and are anxious to take those programs. So we thank you for your continued support. Also, we were excited to have an academic dean at our high school. That person, Ms. Molly Strauss-Sprouse, will be focusing on college and career readiness of our students, 912, also going down and helping with our Explorer test down at the middle school. So really excited to have her aboard. And also Dr. Hammond, up in teaching and learning, had written a grant for a Vista counselor, which is no cost to our district. Shadow Zimmerman is his name, and he will also be in support of recruiting college and career recruiters to come to our school and helping our kids become more college and prepared-ready. So we're really excited about those programs and our people in place to help our kids be successful. We also had great turnouts for our two open house, houses that we had this year. So attendance has improved there. We've also seen a trend in the last three years with our students participating in our fall athletics and activities. And I guess once you see our students starting to participate, we've seen the success in a number of our programs this fall already. So we're excited with that. We're excited to continue to partner with the University of Minnesota with our Ramp Up to Readiness Program, another college preparedness program that we have at the high school. The start of the week last week, we focused with our students. We had class meetings each day with each grade level. And our focus was college and career readiness, the number of tests that are now being required for graduation for each grade level. And then we are in our second year of our culture and climate change with our core values of the high school, of the real expectations. I see Chair Member, Mr. Larkin, wearing his rubber band of, I believe it's his rubber band of our real expectation, our core values of respect, education, attitude, and loyalty. And that's seemed to have embraced, our students have embraced that customized PBIS program that we have in place. And finally, on Friday, we ended the day with a pep fest. And we had a number of, we have, I believe, 11 new hires at the high school right now. And what we did this year at our pep fest is we acknowledged our AP scholars from last year that weren't able to be recognized because of the end of the school year. We also recognized our theater program with our spotlight award winners, as well as our state qualifiers in track and tennis this year. And at the end, we were able to get a number of our new teachers involved in some activities with our students and some relays, which the old teachers did win, or our veteran teachers did win. Excuse me. I'm sure I'll hear about that tomorrow. And at the end, one of the nice things that came about is our whole staff participated in a drawing where a student could put their name in a drawing for a dollar. And if their name was pulled out, they could name any teacher in our building that would then participate in the ice bucket challenge. And it just shows that our culture and climate has changed. I think there was some video of our staff going out and doing that. And the neat thing was is that everybody participated and was willing to do that. So we're off to a strong start, and we want to thank you again for your continued support of our programming.
Any questions or comments for our esteemed panel of principals?
Just have one comment. I've been to meetings for two chambers, Twin Cities North and Minnesota Chamber. They're both focusing on workforce development and the need for skilled workers. So you're playing a vital role, and the economy needs the students that we produce.
Well, thank you very much. Continued success in the school year. I'm sure it will be very successful. Thanks. All right, next on our agenda, we'll move to the action items this week. First agenda item is Constitution Week. The board will be asked to adopt a resolution stating Columbia Heights Independent School District 13 will celebrate the week of September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week. And our presenter this evening is Dwayne Burkus.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Every year, there is Constitution Week. A proclamation comes out from the President of the United States. And it's been our local tradition, as well as the national one, that in our schools, we observe that through lessons that emphasize the importance of the Constitution. So it falls every year on the same dates, September 17th through the 23rd. So once again, we're here to inform the board, I guess, one, that we will be working actively in our classrooms to increase the knowledge and appreciation of the Constitution and its important role in our country. And looking, asking that we declare again that this is Constitution Week in Columbia Heights Public Schools as well.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion? Move that forward.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. Any discussion on Constitution Week? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please? Oh, I should read the resolution, excuse me. Resolution approving September 17th through 23rd, 2014, Constitution Week. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordinate to establish a constitution for the United States. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, and defend against all enemies. And whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 226th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution in the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated during Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, 2014, as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with Public Law 915. Now therefore be it resolved that Columbia Heights Independent School District 13 will celebrate the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week.
Palmer.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lanwer.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Lee, aye.
Very good. Resolution is passed. Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the Education Assistance Contract. The administration will recommend board approval and agreement between Columbia Heights Public Schools and the district's education assist employees for 2014, 2015, and 2015, 2016. This evening's presenter is Lindsey Bennett, Director of Human Resources; Karen Kepel, our school district attorney; Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Chair Bardell, members of the board, and Superintendent Kelly. We're happy to present to you tonight the Education Assistant Contract first, for which we have a tentative agreement that the union has ratified. Minimal changes, as I think we've discussed at recent meetings. The first one is the addition of a particular position to the bargaining unit, the lunch duty monitors. So they will now be a member of the EA bargaining unit. And there are a few other changes that flow from that particular one. Language changes relating to layoff and recall. Really, the only other changes were three financial ones. Salary schedule improvement, of course. And that was 2% in the first year and 2.5% to the existing schedule would be added to each cell in the schedule under this agreement. And then the insurance changes are as they always are, consistent with what the teachers bargained. And the other bargaining units follow suit with that. And then the last item in this contract that was addressed was an increase from 25,000 to 50,000 for life insurance coverage provided by the school district. And that was done to be consistent with all the other bargaining units that have $50,000 worth of life insurance coverage. And it's a two-year contract, which is standard for this and the other bargaining units. And that is what is comprised of the settlement. It's pretty straightforward.
Do I have a motion? Move that forward.
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John. Discussion, Education Convention. All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, and that motion is carried. Thank you. Next up is the clerical contract.
Thank you. Similar settlement parameters for the clerical contract as well. First of all, for the salary is 2% in the first year and 2.5% in the second year. Again, it's a two-year term. Like with a couple of the other local 24 bargaining units that you've already approved for 2014, 16, this bargaining unit had language that needed to be changed to preserve the tax status of the severance pay plan. It's just a change in language to how the dollars are paid out into what tax-deferred vehicle. So that is a part of the change. There were some other minor changes to really just correct. What they, in this particular contract, all the positions are listed by category, and some of them were missing, and some that were included no longer exist. So those changes were made. And then just one other cleanup item for a numerical error that had been in the contract. And again, it's a two-year term. And that is the extent of the tentative agreement for the clerical bargaining unit for two years.
Thanks. Motion, move that forward.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Missy, any discussion on clerical contract?
So has this been tentatively ratified too?
Yes.
I don't really have a question. I do just have a comment, as we've all received all these contracts and have gone over this thoroughly in a special meeting. So this isn't just, we're not just hearing about it right now.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. I was going to, and I forgot, I should have.
With the changes highlighted.
With the changes highlighted, yeah.
Yeah, they were very minimal, and I was very happy to see that.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. Any other discussion on clerical? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion is carried. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, board topics. I do have a board topic, which is superintendent evaluation. And what I did this year to make sure I didn't forget anything is I actually wrote it down. So, yeah, I guess I should have done that for my board member activities. But I didn't. All right, so this is what the statute calls a concise summary. First, I'll go over the process. An online survey based on Superintendent Kelly's job description was sent to all board members. It consisted of 23 attributes or aspects of her job. Each board member could rate each attribute on a scale of excellent, very good, fair, and poor. A board member could also choose not enough information if the board member desired. All the results were sent to the HR director and were kept anonymous. Additionally, comments could be added after each attribute was rated. The board members' responses on each of the attributes were aggregated, and all the comments were listed for each attribute, if any. Copy of the aggregated results were sent to all board members and to Superintendent Kelly. At the last regular board meeting, the board met in closed session to review the aggregated results of the survey. The chair and vice chair met with Superintendent Kelly on a date after the closed session and reviewed the aggregated results of the survey, comments made on the survey, and the general results and comments from the closed session without attribution to any source. In the results, in addition to meeting her goals for the school year, a majority of the board members rated her as excellent or very good on each of the 23 attributes or job aspects. In summary, the attributes or job aspects rated were, and I summarized, establishes and manages the educational operational priorities for the district, provides overall leadership for the district's educational programs, staff development, and initiation of improvements to provide best possible learning environment for students, defines the educational needs of the district to the board and recommends annual staffing, develops, implements, and evaluates plans to implement short and long-term goals of the board, works with the board chair to set agendas for board meetings with background information for proposed decisions, supervises the use of district resources and monitors district revenues and expenditures, oversees district financial operations, works with the board, staff, and legal counsel in determining collective bargaining goals, strategies, and objectives, assumes final responsibility for administration of the terms and conditions of employment with all employee groups, oversees recruitment, selection, staffing, transfer, promotion, and disciplinary action of all district employees, evaluates staff performance and develops staff schedules, establishes a professional, respectful working relationship with staff, volunteers, and community, serves as a liaison between the community and the district to increase communication, respond to parent concerns, and seek community participation in school activities, ensures services are delivered in a manner consistent with the expectations and priorities of the community, serves on and represents a district on various committees, advisory groups, and professional organizations, establishes and maintains effective relationships with government agencies, including local, state, and federal leaders, oversees district employment practices, oversees district responsibility for participation in integration districts, manages all aspects of school district operations, including evaluating results and taking corrective action when needed, provides leadership to a strategic planning process, including short and long-term goals, board priorities, and periodic plan evaluation, develops and implements plans for accomplishing board priorities, and finally, provides linkages between the community, as expressed by the board and the actual work performed by members of the organization. And that concludes the concise summary. Board topics.
I just want one board topic. The 916 Foundation is actually going, is actually in their fundraising mode. So if anybody wants to donate to 916, they give out scholarships to the students based upon merit. And as well as 916 has also, the foundation also provided the specially adaptive playground equipment over at Carner Blue. And the, something I never considered at that time was that a lot of these students had never been able to play at a playground. So it was, it was really nice to see that that foundation, and that it's really, they really do some wonderful, wonderful things with their membership. Either they do a golf tournament and a gala, and they actually collected more money this year than they have in previous years. But they take donations, they take checks, and they take cash. So I thought I'd just put that out there.
All right. You go to, do they have a website, or do you know?
The 916 Foundation, I do have some more information here. It's at www.916educationfoundation.org. And you can find out about a lot of the things that they do and all those dollars that go to these special students.
Great, thanks.
Remember Palmer, do we have a date for the gala?
I was looking in there for that.
I was curious, and I'd watch you on the spot.
Um, I'm not sure if the... They always come on like a school board meeting night, or, I've managed to miss some here.
It's okay, we can find it on the website.
Yeah, I will find it. I probably have an invitation in here somewhere. So, sorry about that.
Any other board topics? Yeah?
Yeah, I know the Columbia Heights Alumni Foundation's dinner is coming up. I forget the exact date, but I know they're looking for donations for their silent auction.
October 23rd is the dinner.
Okay, great.
Lots of donations, looking for lots. Can be in the form of cash or baskets or anything.
Gift certificates.
Yeah, a lot of silent auction items are looking for right now. All right, thanks for the reminder. October 23rd is the Alumni Association Dinner.
And they do quite a bit in scholarships, don't they?
They do.
Yeah, all that goes towards scholarships.
Yeah.
I know those invites they'll be sending out, it's probably sometime next week. And if you don't get one and you're interested in it, there is, it will be information. They have a Facebook page that will have all the information as well, so.
Great. Any other board topics? All right, looks like we can adjourn at 7:49 PM.